Okay, now we're recording. So I've been taking attendance. I think I've got everybody who's here. Did I miss anybody? No? Okay. And are there any additions or deletions from the agenda as it is currently at the moment? No? Okay. And did everybody get a copy of the minutes from the November meeting? And have a chance to look through those minutes?
Were they posted somewhere?
I would assume that they ended up on the website, but...
They did. They were on the website and I sent a link to the minutes last week.
I don't think I caught it.
Okay. I can resend that out right now if folks want the link.
I can go back and find it if I just, I didn't catch it.
Okay. Did everybody else get copies? Or links? Or... Why you guys are all so quiet? Now I know how Perry always felt. Okay. So assuming everybody else got copies of the agenda or agenda, well, minutes, and was able to look at those, are they approved? Shall I take your silence as approval?
Yes.
Okay. And the open forum part, I don't remember anybody ever talking during that, but does anybody have anything they want to bring up in the open forum section of our meeting today? Oh, Brent put the minutes from last meeting in the chat if anybody wants to go look at it.
This is Linda from the Plain Tree Health Resource Center, and I have just a kind of a general question and may have missed this along the many meetings that we've had, but recently we had an issue where there were some duplicate barcodes. And then I learned that there are a couple of libraries who are sort of making their, doing their own barcode. And just wondered, is there a, you know, how do we prevent duplication when we have libraries who are creating their own barcode?
We have, this is Beth. We have a document up on the Sage website that lists the barcode schemes as we know them. And we try to track that. Obviously, libraries can make decisions on their own about their barcodes, but we try to work with them to avoid duplication.
I don't even know.
So if somebody knows of a situation going on, we can work to kind of address that.
Okay, thanks, Beth.
You're welcome, Linda.
That's interesting because it seems like Evergreen is usually really good about catching those.
I'd like to hype in right now. I was the person that had the duplicate barcodes. It only actually affected one library and it was with a bank of codes that I ordered back in 2013. And it was 4,000 labels for patrons and 4,000 labels for items. And ID label went back and they did see that they had sent them to me and they'd also sent them to the Dells Wasco County. Nobody else has been affected. They've since corrected it. They're mailing me new ones at no cost. And I've been talking to Beth and sharing Beth the information that I discovered because it sounds like Linda has now got a different numbering system and Dooferr has a different numbering system and Sherman County has a different numbering system. So ID label then contacted all the libraries that I gave them names of because all of us used to be in Gorge Link and all of us were kind of in that same numbering system. But it should be taken care of now.
Okay.
Thanks, Ann.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm so glad it's done.
Yeah. That's a pretty big mix-up on their part. Does anybody else have any other open forum items to discuss? If not, we can move on to the reports, starting with Brent and Beth, the Sage staff.
Brent, you can lead off.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Hello?
Yep.
Yes.
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, just checking. So I'll put a link to kind of the little report overview I'll be following along with if you want to... Did you get that, Ryan?
Ryan, can you put that up on the screen?
Um, yeah. Let's see. And then we go to... There we go.
Okay, so, so yeah, just kind of a, and Beth, please feel free to chime in or anybody if you have questions kind of along the way. I'm going to kind of breeze through this. But so we successfully completed the upgrade to 2.91. And I think everything, for the most part, has been ironed out that I've been made aware of. The Mark templates are back in. The 999 fields have been re-added to those templates. And some of the kind of custom discrepancies with libraries, custom URLs have been fixed as well. We've started using an analytic platform called Pilick to kind of monitor the traffic on both the sage lib.org site and our WebOPAC. This will not track information in the Evergreen Staff Client though because there is kind of a consideration about privacy and we don't want users' information to leak out. So that's restricted to only the web client, sorry, the web catalog. Speaking of the Staff Client, there is a web client demonstration available on the test server right now because in the next Evergreen release we will be, most likely unless anything changes drastically, migrating onto that instead of having to download a client like we typically are now. And so there's a few, there's a picture of that on the next screen, but feel free to poke around on it with the password that is listed right there in the login. You won't do any damage, it's just the test server, so you can go wild. And then just the last part of that, the general update. While we upgraded to 2.91, it also gave us an opportunity to clean out a lot of kind of unused resources and free up some space so that while, so we reduced the size by a good bit of our database so that updates and backups aren't as resource-intensive now and we have extra space in case we need to make changes or do anything else as well. And so that's what that looks like. And some people might be asking, why? Why do we have to have a new client, an upcoming release? And the main reason for that is that, sorry, just a sec, Ryan, is that the clients that we're using right now, the code base that that's working off of is no longer being updated. So Evergreen in general, of course, is having worked on it, but the Staff Client in particular is not an area of importance for them right now. So we want to make sure we're moving on to a platform where fixes will be added and it'll continually be looked at for security fixes and things like that. It's also using technology that more developers are familiar with now rather than a kind of particular brand of mixed code that not everyone uses so much. You won't have to also download a client like you do now. You'll just have to go to the website. So that's also going to be nice. And it'll also work with a mobile device. So any, basically anything that can use a web client, or sorry, a web browser. So you could even do inventory with your mobile phone or Android tablet or basically anything that could launch a browser window. You could use the Staff version too. And as you can kind of see in that screenshot, it is a little rough around the edges. It's close to the stock templates they were using from Bootstrap. And so we can modify that ourselves as well right now, but there's still a lot of changes going on with it. So it might look quite a bit different come the production release. And while it's enabled on the Staff Client, right, or sorry, the test server right now, it's not on the normal catalog.sage eou.edu address because there's still some issues with ports and things like that. I want to make sure that we're not opening up any holes in our server. So we're talking with EOUIT about that as well. I think you can move on to the next one if you want, Ryan. I'm looking at two screens here. Okay. And so with the slider on the web, the main site, the catalog.sage eou.edu, the slider that's listed there now will only include items that are, have been published between 2015 and above. And this is only enabled at the Sage level. So if you have a slider set to your particular library, it won't scope out that subtly because you might not have, Sage has a lot more holdings than one library in particular, so it's easier to limit it that much. But it would be a little more detrimental to do that on the individual level. And this is reflected on those new lists that are available on sage lib.org and through that main New Items button on the catalog as well. And so with the updates, just a few quick kind of updates of what changed. We have some better lost item handling, which we'll go over in the next few slides. We also have a 30-day email notice for account expiration. So if a patron, before their library account goes inactive now, they will get an email 30 days prior to that alerting them of the fact so that they can contact their library to get that adjusted. Also, there's an Adjust to Zero option in the, in the Bills portion of a Patron Edit screen. If you want to look at their bills, you can now make any bill that has a strange balance or you just don't want to mess with. You can choose the Adjust to Zero option and that will effectively bring the bill to zero, which can be helpful on strange negative bills or bills that have been modified heavily. Yeah, so now there's a link in the Staff Client. When you go to a Bib title to refresh the added content, you'll see a link for that in the right-hand corner of the screen near the Placehold section. And that is to refresh the added content, which includes the book jacket images as well as for the libraries that have it enabled, like Baker, any of the content cafe or user reviews or custom content. So it'll query the server for the newer version of that. Patrons are now able to sort their lists of items and check out and hold history in the OPAC when they log in so they can sort that however they'd like, which gives them a little more control over that. And also when you're registering a new patron, there's a general duplicate search to make sure that you don't register the same patron with the same information. But this will also look at patrons now that have become inactive. So there's a greater chance to catch those. Some of the biggest changes actually came with the handling lost and negative balances. So there's some, several library settings that will affect that, which we can talk about as well, maybe a little later. But the first one is to prohibit negative balances on bills. This will basically set it so that any bill will not go into the negative amounts if perhaps an item is returned after being lost and they had already paid the item for the item. It won't make that payment and then bring it back down. So you have a strange negative balance. I know this has happened a lot and I'm really happy to actually see this, this change come in. Which is, there's also the next setting on the next slide which supplements that. So if you want to set an interval period for a time where those negative balances are allowed, you can set that here as well. Which is a new one. And then the last one is kind of the catch-all. And this will basically, as soon as any bill gets to zero, so maybe even if you click that, Take a Bill, Adjust to Zero, there is no chance that it will have any of its items, or sorry, any of the fees voided or returned so that the balance will become negative. And these are all brand-new settings, so we're still kind of getting a feel for what they do in the wild. But if you'd like to try any of these out, I'd be very happy to, Beth or I would be very happy to get you set up for this and try it out to see how it actually works. But I think it's a very good, good step in the right direction. And then at the last council meeting, I discussed kind of setting up training for the admin, sorry, admin training session as well as reports. And I feel that while I could do the admin training virtually, probably through something like this, the reports training is something that I feel would be best done in a physical location. So I had a question for the group if there was possibly a Sage location that could host the event. I have a poll set up with dates, possible dates, but I just wanted to put a location in there if somebody had a thought maybe about what would be a good place for that. I don't mind traveling anywhere for that. I just wanted to make sure what would be the easiest for Sage members to go to if anyone had any ideas. Yeah. So yeah, I guess at the end of this, if anybody had any ideas about the location, that's kind of the main question I just have.
And Perry had a couple of questions about things in the chat. He wanted to know about a rollout date for the web client. And then he...
Okay, Perry, the rollout date for the web client, they're still actively developing it and they don't recommend using it in production yet. But when I enable it for us, you can try it out using what we have on catalog.sage, just the general address. But I wouldn't use it for checking out books or, you know, anything other than kind of browsing and experimenting right now just because we're not 100% sure how it's going to handle right now.
And he also had a question about the Mark Item is Missing Pieces option. He says he can't find it in 2.9.
Well, that's okay, Perry. I'll look at that. I was, I was not aware of that right now.
Okay, cool. Thanks. Is there anything Beth or Brent still want to talk about?
This is Beth. Brent gave a great summary of what's been going on. I just guess I would add that I've been working with committees quite a bit and submitting grant reports at that time of year. So life stays busy.
Cool. Okay. So the cataloging committee is next? And is there anything there?
Just a brief update. We continue to work on the cataloging resources that are up on the website, reviewing those and making changes or suggesting changes as needed. The mentor group continues to meet to kind of help guide those resource directions. And we did not meet this past month, but we will be meeting at the beginning of February.
Brent, you're the circulation committee.
Yep. Okay, so let me bring up just what I had here. So at the circulation committee, we're going, we decided to meet every third Wednesday of the month. And so the next meeting is coming up around February 10th, same time at 10:00, public standard time, public Pacific. Yeah, we kind of just discussed, it ended up being kind of a big discussion about 2.9 upgrade. But we also talked about, there are some action items that have actually been actioned, which are allowing renewals for patrons after they hit the maximum fines threshold. So if a patron gets that, you have reached this threshold for maximum fines. They can actually now renew their items, but that's the only additional privilege to kind of maybe mitigate any charges they have or at least give them a little extra time to find those items. We talked about updating the Cirque Policy documents. And I think I'm going to talk to Perry about that. I think he mentioned some, he might be able to help a little bit. We walked through the Statistics platform, which is available on sage lib.org statistics with a login password of View Stats. Oh, and we also talked about the duplicate item issue, which this generally affects libraries that are part of a system that have multiple branches such as Baker, Lake County, and Hood River, where if you search for a popular title like, you know, that has a lot of items like Harry Potter, for example, you'll see certain titles that have duplicate listings for items even though those don't exist. And that's a fix that we've been quoted on right now that, I haven't heard any additional information about it myself. I don't know if you have, Beth. But the quote was real, pretty high, at least as far as I thought. And they were also considering if the fix would go into the web client or the current staff client. And it looked like it would have to be on the web client right now as opposed to the current client we're using right now just because of, like I mentioned, they've stopped using or stopped updating that code. Let's see. The Mark templates were fixed from the meeting. 30-day account expiration notice. We're going to look at a copy status usage report for, to see what amount of Sage holdings, what statuses they're in to facilitate cleaning up statuses that may not be being used and just cluttering up the dropdown list. Yeah, I think that's, those are the big points unless someone was there at the meeting and has something to mention that I missed.
We did record the meeting and I will be producing and posting minutes on the website too.
Okay. Well, thanks. So the Courier Committee.
Okay. The Courier Committee did meet earlier this month and we are still working on updated Courier procedures. So that document will be coming out. We also discussed the rollout of the DVD boxes and that that seemed to be successful. And we're also looking at, if there's budget funds, to go ahead and purchase audiobook boxes and CD boxes for the music CDs.
Okay. And is that everything? Okay. So there's no Development Committee, correct? So, oh, Brent posted the Cirque Committee meeting on the chat there if anybody wanted to have that link. So is there anything for the Governance Committee at the moment?
Hi, Ryan, this is Marie. Now, I'm sorry, we haven't managed to meet yet.
Okay. Then the Budget Committee with Buzzy is next.
So the Budget Committee met recently. We did an initial passover on the budget. We have a few things that we need to investigate a bit further. And we hope to have like kind of a poll out for the membership soon. We're thinking about looking at, specifically looking at the user fee, I'm sorry, the membership charges. So I think that's it unless people have questions. You will hear more from us soon.
Okay. All right. Unless anybody has any questions for Buzzy. I think that's it for updates for the committees. We do have one new business item, which is Sage Support for the Annual Evergreen Conference. And I remember we did this last year when it was in Hood River. I don't remember what we did numerically speaking, if anybody has that. Whoever added this to the agenda, do you want to talk about it?
This is Beth. Sorry, I didn't put my name afterwards. I just, I'm on the Program Committee for this year's Evergreen Conference. And they were looking for sponsors. And since we sponsored last year, there was a question as to whether Sage wanted to sponsor again. The conference is in North Carolina. Both Brent and I are planning on going. And so I just told the Program Committee that I would talk to the Sage Council about whether they would like to sponsor again. To get an idea of costs, there's some functions that we could sponsor individually, like an afternoon break for $800 or a breakfast for $1,000 if there was something specific. Basically, with the sponsorship, our name would get put in the program. It would be at the venue. It would also be advertised. It's just another way to, I guess, support the Evergreen community. But we don't have a budget, a direct budget line for something like this. So it would have to come out of either miscellaneous funds or another category that isn't being spent this year. So I guess just trying to get the feelings of the group as to whether you'd like to or not.
Beth, do we have any funds that are not currently committed that we could draw on?
Without looking at all the budget categories, you know, I'm sure that there's some categories that we're under in. I think we still allocated money towards development, which hasn't been spent, but there may be another, something else somebody would like to use that development money for. I know we talked, go ahead.
Do we know when the Evergreen Conference is this year?
It takes place in April.
Okay. And our next meeting would be in March?
Yes.
So would people want to... Would people want to defer this and have Perry come in in March with a number? Since he's got the budget information, I presume?
That would be my recommendation. This is Dia.
Okay, yeah, either Perry or I could come up with where we are budget-wise, and that would give you a better evaluation of whether it's something we want to spend this year.
So does somebody need to make a motion to defer that pending an examination of the budget, basically, till the March meeting?
This is Dia. Move that we table this until the March meeting, when we can look at what our budget's like.
Okay. Does somebody want to second that?
Mary, if any, I'll second it.
Okay. So motion and second to table that until the next meeting, so that we can have somebody look at the budget and see where we are, and see what we can do to help them out. Okay? So... I guess that's it for the new business. Are there any agenda items aside from the Evergreen conference funding that we need to add for the next meeting, that anybody would like to add?
This is Beth. There's some things that Brent and I still need to accomplish from the last council meeting. So we're going to be sending out a survey, and so we'll report on the survey results. One of the questions was brought up at the last council meeting about increasing the number of renewals, and we wanted to poll the Sage libraries to get their feedback on that, and then I think there was something else we were going to add to that survey as well. So we will be taking care of that and report it at the next meeting.
Okay. And I don't think anybody has any assignments, other than looking at the budget and you guys' survey reports, so...
Ryan, another item that needs to be on the agenda, I thought of this morning, is the nominating committee. Needs to be started next month, the next time, too.
Okay. Okay. Somebody...
I just, I just thought of something else. Sorry, Ryan. We're going to be sending another... Having another patron survey start in February. This was a recommendation of the mentor group and the cataloging committee. Basically, under the terms of the grant, we need to assess whether the improvements we made increased patron satisfaction, so we'll be sending the same survey out that we sent initially, and then comparing, ultimately comparing the results.
Okay. Okay. Anything else?
I have a question about that, Beth. I don't remember last year. This is Mary again in Pendleton. Was that survey... Was there a button on the webpage, I mean, on the on the search page for that survey?
Yeah, we did post a link up on our main catalog page, so the patrons would see it when they got to our website. So I think encouraging either online filling out of the form, or having some print copies available at the library, so they can do either method.
I think we have both here, because we have a lot of patrons who aren't super computer-literate, so...
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any other additions to the agenda for the next meeting? And does agenda items make up the...
We'll have the budget on the next meeting. Budget approval.
Okay. Okay. Is that everything? Okay. And the agenda items also seem to make up a pretty substantial task list for some people, so... If there's nothing else, I think we're done for the day. Do we need a motion to adjourn? Or are we just adjourned?
This is Linda Stahl. I'll make that motion.
Okay. And a second?
Oh, Perry, just a second.
Okay. I guess we're done. Thanks for staying with me through my awkwardness.
Thanks, Ryan. Ryan, would you mind sending me the attendee list?
Yeah, I can do that.
Thanks a lot.
Yep.